We did move it to.
We'll have to tell her. Which maybe we do need to take that with him just because he was bad just with that.
Basically all of this.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Heard on the radio there, permit was denied by the.
In North Bismarck, not Washington, I kind of like the new San Diego's. Yesterday.
What do you got?
What do you got, Sharon?
Yep, I've got it on. That's the only thing I got incorrect.
We ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. I'll call this a special meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Jamie, any discussion? Say none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay, only thing on the agenda today is presentation of the preliminary budget and then approval.
Okay. Alright. Just a few items in strictly about the budget. I am the Chief Financial Officer of Mercer County, not one cent is spent without my authority. This is our preliminary budget and I want to explain things before I hand them out to you, but you all get a copy and then I want to explain the copies of what you're gonna get. Okay, so this is preliminary budget with all changes from that July twenty-fifth meeting and the department, departmental meeting we had yesterday. So here's what was added beyond and above that. There was fifty cents added to that dollar raise. County's gonna cover hundred percent of that PERS retirement, except where that PERS safety program. Those people will only be paying one point seven eight percent, that's fair across the board. General mills came in at fifty-three point five-two, which was only point oh six miller higher, not even a whole mill, point oh six higher than last year's. And, and then in twenty-two, because I'm giving you twenty-two and twenty-three's information to compare things, and then for twenty-two, we were four point eight nine mills higher. Total mills, you'll get a document like this and you're gonna have our total mills, what we're milling, and then twenty-three's and twenty-two's to look at. That'll give you a reference. So we came in for the, because that one I just gave was the general fund mills. Okay, the total mills for the county is at one oh two point five eight. We only came in a one point five mills higher than last year, and, and seven point oh seven lower from twenty-twenty-two. The total funds levied for this year, and to me, that gives you guys an idea of what we're actually taxing the people. That came in, a hundred and, a hundred and three thousand dollars, four hundred and, a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-six cents less than twenty-twenty-three. And for twenty-twenty-two, we came in four hundred and eighty-one thousand dol- six hun- okay, so four hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars less than twenty-two. So that means we did good on this budget. And, and only we did it because we all worked together and it's very important. And every figure on that is correct, we checked it, it is accurate. Not one more penny will be added to this budget. The needs of the county departments are met, it is balanced. And if not approved, okay, so if you decide you don't want to approve this, then what we do is we go back to last year's mills and that's what we use. But as your auditor, this is a balanced budget and, you know, you do what you need to do. The only thing you can do to this budget right now is cut it. And you go ahead and cut it. Then what I'm doing is I'm taking that total that you want to cut and all those cuts are coming out of every one of your budgets for twenty-four and the state's attorney. Because you're all in this together, you don't want to work with me, that's okay. I am giving the commission and state's attorney until the end of the year to learn what a good commission and state's attorney does and acts accordingly. Otherwise, as of January first of twenty-twenty-four, all elected commission total budgets and the elected state's attorney's salary and benefits will be totally unfunded. The only way you're gonna get paid in twenty-twenty-four is if you collect two thousand signatures from the public, and that's only fifty-five percent of the voting public, not the whole public, from this, the people of this county, because I work for those people and I care, they want to hear a word out of you. So if they tell me that they want, they think you deserve to be paid, I have no issues with that, because I work for the people. And if you get these signatures, I want names, addresses, and a phone number, because all signatures will be verified. This will have to be on my desk by September twenty-second, because if you don't, guess what, our budget gets better, because you're wiped out. The Tyler contract has been signed and we are finally in line for getting our updated software. Eleven other counties got ahead of us, there's senseless delays. Cindy Zuger's retirement, that the county rightfully owes her and you should have done that right when you corrected her position. That's gonna get done today. I am putting a request for proposals to perform county engineering and affiliated services for Mercer County out today. This county will have the most qualified and fairly charged for engineering services. All information gathered from this process will be shared with the public, because the public is who I work for, not you guys, the public. I would advise this board to quietly make a motion to approve this preliminary budget as is, then close this meeting, because the rest of us have work to do. And it's county.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I don't want to hear a word.
Yeah.
Point of order.
I have just.
You're, you're not a, you're not a chairman.
And you will not get paid the rest of the year.
Go ahead.
Oh, I will.
They'll talk to the G on this.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we at least see the budget?
I will also like to remind the board.
I don't need to listen to this.
No.
This not, this isn't a, this isn't a, a speech giveaway, this is a budget meeting, hand us the budget.
It is, it's budget.
Then hand us the budget.
Items because it's affecting you.
When I heard Carmen from you, what you just said, you're the chief financial officer.
Yes, I am.
And you just totally are running the whole county and no one else, anything to say about it?
Well, at this time.
Excuse me?
I am.
I didn't know this was an open meeting for other agenda items.
It is, all connected to the budget, because you guys are gonna send us a ton of money, thank you. I truly believe your pays are misappropriation of county funds, and this includes every one of you plus the state's attorney.
I advise you to read the Century Code eleven, eleven, eleven.
I don't care.
Eleven, eleven, you better read it.
You guys don't listen to anything, you make your own news up.
We are the commission, we do run the, the county.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do, administrative decisions for the county are not made by, made by full-time employees of the county, but by an elected governing board of three or five commissioners, they're responsible for the county budget, county road department, social service administration, and many other county concerns, period. If you have a problem with that, we'll address it. Now, we are commission here, we're in a meeting, Mr. Chairman, I point of order.
No, I'd like to see the budget.
I had Mark put her stuff in there. If I don't get you in there, so when she wants it. I had Mark put her other stuff in there. And Dan, and any public entity that wants a copy, this, this is the county entities. Please call me, I will get you a copy, and with the public, I will go one by line through it. There's nothing in here that isn't a deed of the county, it is not a waste, it's only for the county. And I've enjoyed working with everybody putting this together, because it's a good budget.
I need more time to review this.
Problem with that, Jean, is that it's due tomorrow.
Pardon?
Problem is that it's due tomorrow.
But we can, other than cuts, we can, unless there's something additional, that was to be added.
But, I mean, it has to be approved, you know, by tomorrow, but I.
I guess what I'm getting at is the departments turn their budgets in.
Yeah.
So I don't see that we would need to increase anything. And we can, other than any additions that we would want to make, if there's any additions that are needed to be added.
We could make those additions, but it's, but, because we're so close to the deadline, we gotta, we gotta approve something today.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't have.
I understand, you can approve by and always cut down.
Yes.
You can go down, but you can't go up.
Federal government reimbursement, is that for our, uh, federal prisoners, or is this just, am I looking at this wrong?
Yes, it is, it's estimated. Money's that they'll take yet.
Okay. Sometimes I read it and it's like, no, I'm not even close, it's, just because it's got Fed in front doesn't mean it was for that, I mean, that's why I have to ask to make sure I got it right, okay? Dance deputy fee.
No, they do that all the time.
I mean.
The deputies go to things and they have a separate account just so that we keep track of that.
And what is that income from?
It's from deputies being assigned to like weddings.
Oh, okay.
They want a, a deputy there.
Got it.
It's a small fee, but it is revenue.
Yep, I just, once again, just want to clarify.
One thing you didn't notice, yeah, nothing appropriated in there in this budget for the Fair Board?
I do.
Did I, did I miss it in here?
Absolutely.
I missed it somewhere. I didn't, I didn't.
No, it's, you gotta get used to this, okay. So here's our revenues, but here's our expenses, okay, so where I put it, okay, here's where it's at. It's in this miscellaneous.
I guess I was looking for a heading like these other ones, you know, like.
It's an ambulance and stuff outside.
You know, like weed, like weed.
General fund is kind of different than the other ones.
Okay.
Okay, I had it here, but it was sixty-one thousand, but we put it back, this is where it's taken out of, is this miscellaneous.
This one, it's fine over there.
So it is included and it was the sixty-one thousand.
Alright, I, I would just.
So everything, like I said.
I was looking for.
What was included in miscellaneous? Okay, so we got the Fair Board, we've got, uh, NDACO fees, we've got, it's our miscellaneous on the general, payments to the coal severance, those kind of things, it's all put in there.
See, I was looking for.
And actually, the copies of everything you got on the twenty-fifth, if you look through those, it's, you will find it, yes, you will. You have everything you need to look through that and do something else.
Well, no, I was just looking, I was looking for a heading like this.
Right, and, and because it's a general, the weed board is that.
Yeah, no, I saw the weed board.
The general fund, there's so much in it, that that's how they break it out.
Is the nine-one-one in the sheriff's department now?
Yeah, well, yeah, yes.
All right, we have, do we still have to track it separately?
Absolutely. Nine-one-one fees are law, you have to spend only on nine-one-ones, and that is.
Okay.
Therefore, certain amounts go for his positions, and then the rest of it is all for equipment in the dispatch. It's all based to the dispatch.
Okay.
Did you put fees in there for the audit?
We, we won't have an audit next year, we, we are in an audit right now. And that is every two years, so next year, then we'll put it in there.
We're in an audit right now?
Yes, and we finish it up at the end of twenty-twenty-three, and money's was put in the last budget for that.
I was off a year then, I thought we approved the last one.
The only one who didn't, because I asked that question maybe a month ago, and.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, I did ask too.
The state is doing it again, correct, yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay, now I remember.
There you go.
Yeah.
Some of these are.
What does the special vehicle fund, um, cover?
Okay, that's the sheriff's office, when they, they put money aside, um.
It just wasn't, it was in our last meeting, but it's, or the last budget meeting, but it's on here, so that's why.
Yeah, and.
We covered that when Terry talked to us, we definitely talked about.
Well, yeah, I know we talked about it, just not on this line versus this line, so.
I haven't come across it yet. Where would the HR that we requested at the last meeting be?
No, what I told you is all the updates we did with all the department heads on the twenty-fifth are on that. And then yesterday, we had a department meeting and I told you the additions we made, that is all that did it.
Okay, so you did not put in.
I did not.
Okay. And I haven't come across, make Ed that I asked to put in.
Nope.
And I haven't come across stuff for building permit or comprehensive land use plan?
Nope.
Okay. Just make a note that the auditor has not put in requests that the commissioners have asked for, so.
I've got a question.
Yes.
This one here with West River Trend, that there's nothing in there, we don't do anything with them or all or not?
Nope, no.
Because I didn't think we did.
We used to, but we just left it in there and there's, there's no. The main miscellaneous is that one one.
Because I know, I guess somebody had seen that before and I said, I am.
What's that?
These are actually checked with the treasurer and Gwen worked on them, so these are the actual numbers. Twenty-two is the one that they really worked on to make sure everything was.
Since this meeting.
Oh, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we were, and you, you mentioned it, HR, if we were to create a HR position, does that have to be in this budget, right now, listed separately?
It wouldn't have to be listed separately. So as stated before, we couldn't go up in the final budget. However, after the calendar year starts, we could do budget amendments. And the next year, there just wouldn't necessarily be revenues associated with it. So it would create an unbalanced budget. However, it's still, in my, from my understanding, it's still doable. So there's only a couple of funds that you had delinquent tax collection on? You're comfortable with just the ones that you listed? So like, you don't have any in general fund, but there's a couple of funds that you.
That I followed with what they've done in the past.
Okay.
And yeah, some of them, it just, yeah, there's some that just, you know, it's more important to have.
Yeah, I saw the cash reserve, I just, I just know the last time we did it.
As far as that, I don't think they've ever done that.
Uh, we did it a few times last year, but like, we got some here, but that's not.
And that was what was there, so I just used it.
Okay, no, I'm not complaining, I'm just, just a question.
And that's where the treasurer, Dawn and I are gonna watch this budget and get a feel for it. So how much delinquent taxes do we have, do we need that there? So then we're both kinda working together, because the longer we do, the better feel, yes, but then.
And the dollar fifty is what departments as a whole, they wanted, not more, not less. Nope, that's what they're asking for.
Couple of them asked for five percent and depending on where your wages, some of that's more, some of that's slightly less, but.
So that's why, and I know some had said a median of whatever and some had said eight percent somewhere. But the sheet we got, the whole is less than that, that's why.
Yes, and yes, that is the dollar only there. So all I did with the budget is I added in that extra fifty percent. Everything that would have gone up for that request is in that budget, but in just the line item so that it's easy to, you know, take out if we need to, whatever, whatever's decided.
And the health insurance still has to be in here, but then the county covers.
And that is included, that extra expense for that, which, yeah, it's included. Everything that I told you regarding those changes from yesterday are included on the bottom. Yeah, that's the numbers you got.
And law enforcement purses, because that was different.
Also, the only thing, yes, then that means that the county pays for everybody's purses, normal purses, but that extra with that safety is only.
Say point one-nine, is that what it was?
Only paying one point seven-eight, and that's starting in twenty-four, not now. But that is fair across the board. You guys get yours, but we all get a hundred percent paid. So normally it would be like sixteen point two-sixths for employees. But this way, you're only gonna pay for extra for that purses, for the Sheriff's Office, it's a one point seven-eight. And then the rest of us get a benefit also, because the benefit will be the same for those of us, you know what I mean? So anyway.
So the county's gonna cover the same portion regardless of plan?
The county will pay the full portion. Just Gwen here.
Yeah, the county would pick up the full sixteen point two-six percent during January. And then, and that would be for everyone and then the extra for the public safety plan. Those employees that are in that plan will pay the one point seven-eight percent above the sixteen point two-six. Does their plan bring up to eighteen point four?
So the law enforcement individuals pay that?
They would cover one point seven-eight.
Well, I guess I had asked that, the county would pick that up, but.
But this way, Terry, it's fair across the board, we just can't have it.
It's fair that the county uses money in the future for putting.
I know, and I know, and I've heard you, but I still want it fair across the board.
So are we doing the hundred percent purs versus hundred percent health insurance like you guys had talked about because not everybody takes? Health insurance?
The health insurance that you're covering this year belongs to the employees. It's not even, it's money sitting there and it's been sitting there because. Okay, so that's just money going back to everybody that put in, whether they have full family, whatever. So if they don't have full family, it's single, well, that's all they put in. But that's what's gonna happen just this year because of those funds that need to go back. They can't be sitting here and they can't be used for anything else, because the employees, they're the employees.
And this, I mean, I'll make a note of this, law enforcement purs does not affect me in any way in my other capacity, but it is something that I think it was requested differently.
Gwen, what are the percentages right now without any changes on the purs?
Right now, the county is paying fifteen point two-six percent.
Okay. And the total that is required to be contributed?
Fifteen point two-six. Oh, okay, sorry, so county portion right now is ten percent.
Okay.
And the employees are paying the five point two-six percent.
And the way the budget is, is that the total sixteen point two percent is covered by the county?
It's because it's going up in January, then the first portion is going up one percent, so it's going up to sixteen point two-six percent.
Yeah, I get that, I'm just saying that the way the budget is presented, the county is covering all of that?
Go back to what you were talking, Terry, I missed what were, what you were requesting, we didn't, I didn't understand it. Go back and tell me what you were, we didn't get what we were, you didn't get what you want on the.
My, my request was that that difference, that one percent still, you know, our employees would pay the same as all the rest of the employees in the county. There would be a little bit of that one point nine-six or whatever percent that would be charged to the county higher for my employees, but what that does is get them employees out of the workforce faster, not that they do it age, but faster, saving, not right now, the one percent you see the cost now, but in the future, you save that money when people leave the, that, or leave the workforce earlier. You save a lot more in all kinds of benefits, so. And as far as fairness issue, there's none there because the formula is still the same, the way retired, the way retired. The only thing that allows to do is people to retire sooner. And if they retire sooner, of course, they get less benefits, but the county don't incur the costs that they do with the employees that have worked shift work for thirty years. I guess the fact, in my opinion, the employee, my employees are gonna be penalized that one point nine percent now, or now, to save money for the county in the future.
What was, uh, was it at the last commission meeting, we voted to?
Make it effective October one.
For the law enforcement.
Yeah.
And at the next commission meeting, I said, I think we have it on the agenda for, to meet the actual.
But we made no decision on monies?
What's that?
Okay.
We haven't made a decision on the base one.
Okay. I just don't, I just don't want us caught even contradicting ourselves here.
No, that was still, that wasn't decided, but that, that's what I asked.
Okay.
I guess I remember that decision from you guys.
I didn't even think it was that high, I always thought, I thought it was like point nine something.
Well, the plan's going up for everybody.
But because the plan's going up, that's where it's.
For everybody, it's just ours, I believe there is that difference there, it's going up a little higher for us because of the public safety plan.
So it's like one, it's, it's a one percent increase across the board for.
Everybody.
Everyone, but it's an additional like point nine, like a little one point nine.
Yes, it's a more point nine, so.
Yeah.
Nine point seven, you said, one point nine seven?
And one point seventy percent more.
Okay.
In the, in the other main plan.
So if you want to add that to it, how do you add that now?
And the counties have a minimum that they're required to contribute, but not a maximum, from my understanding? Okay.
That's still as clear as mud in my head right now. Because if it's point nine, let's, whatever it is, point nine percent right now higher. It is one point, as of today, it would be one point nine percent higher, one.
One point one nine. Right now, the main plan is they contribute a fifteen point two-six percent and the safety plan is at a sixteen point four-five until January one, then it increases.
And then on January one, what does the main plan go up to?
Sixteen point two-six.
What percent?
And the public safety goes up to eighteen point oh-four.
Thank you. Now the mud got a little clearer.
A little clearer?
Yeah, that's, well. I had a calculator laying right here, I must have. Don't need it now. Don't need a calculator for that one. That's one. What would that one point seven-eight percent total?
Carmen, you have that, I don't have it for.
No.
I don't.
Do you have an approximate? You don't wanna be held to any number, I understand. Okay.
Then we'd have to take that times all the officers, all the people that are gonna be in it, and then calculate. Okay. But yeah, no, we do not have that.
And then, probably gonna get yelled at or spanked, but I was just wondering if it's a, you know, a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, a million?
I can go try to run some quick numbers.
Yeah.
Like an order of magnitude, I think is what you're gonna ask him, like, is it order of magnitude, is it a ten grand, is it a hundred thousand? Yeah, just, not that we'd hold you to anything, but just what would that?
Because I, I understand it's, you know, it's not gonna be, you know, five thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. I just wanna know, is it gonna be an approximate, just like Mr. Prey said, just?
Thanks, Gwen.
And right now, our total. I know, the road department, I gotta sit down and look that over some more, I'm sorry, it's.
Well, yeah, the numbers in there are what I was given, and then what you guys, any changes we made in that twenty-fifth meeting, we were going through it, that's what's in there. And yes, you should have copies of everything that we went through for that.
Yeah.
Every entity, you should be able to check whatever you need to check.
But my best guess is gonna be the road, road department fund is gonna be.
And like building maintenance.
I don't think it'll be short.
See, that would be in. It's both in the general fund. So where it's gonna be at, not revenues, because this is revenues, these are everything coming in, but go to expenditures, here we go, yes. So here's the reporters.
How do you break down what they did in their office?
Okay, here's the thing. Okay, you have a copy of that, everything I gave you on the twenty-fifth, you should be able.
Don't mind the crunchies, the kids got the paper staring on it.
I don't think this is the treasurer's office. The treasurer's office was a lot smaller, this is auditor.
I gave him the county board one, I thought that's what he was looking at.
Oh, he wanted.
Okay, then I guess, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this would be, is that the county, yeah, that's the county road?
I was going to look if that.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We could add an HR line if we wanted to right now.
Yes.
Okay.
We can approve the preliminary with changes that we request.
Yeah, I just put a ballpark number in there, because I know there's been a lot of talk about that one particular item.
Yeah, and if you look at the general fund.
It's gonna be something like this.
Line two, the cash reserves.
So here's the auditor, what are we looking for?
Yeah, the auditor, that's all mine, that isn't the treasurer's.
That's not necessarily allocated for anything?
No, I do.
You know, those are the numbers we adjusted last year.
Oh, is it, it's.
To kind of balance things.
I didn't.
Cash reserve, yeah.
It is, yes, because yeah, it's more small ones, they could be there.
Oh, yeah, I've got that.
But this is what they're estimating for this year, based on what they have. Well, everything goes to the county road, yeah, so the unorganized gets transferred over.
Okay.
Because.
The other pages all going to that page, right? I just wanted his building fund. He had three seventy-five initially, and then it said it would be two hundred.
Well, there was one.
This one is. This one is, and that'd be this one.
Yep.
This is back.
That's good, what's this?
And you can verify that one. Another connection, in case I'm wrong.
No, I can, I mean, I see the number.
He had initial for three seventy-five, that's the, that's the page I was trying to look at. I'm one page away, because he had three seventy-five on the issue, but then he got. Whatever it was significantly less, that was one I just had a big circle.
Oh, here it says. Let's go to.
Just because it was a.
Yeah.
They get transferred to the county.
Yeah, go right to the county road. They will go to page ten.
So any of the road projects next year, we're not anticipating any D O T reimbursement?
Actually, everything that Charlie talked about and Ken, that sheet that Charlie gave us, all of that, everything on there is included in that budget.
Okay.
And then we took what the state gave us for numbers, that we have state coming in, that is added in also, but yeah, everything that Charlie told us. That whole amount is included in the county road budget and was put on in this budget.
This number, this is where she wants this, right?
That's, yeah, that's what we budgeted, yes.
So now, what does she's gonna do, the point, what, three point what, raise or?
No, no, raises that is, that's in here right now, you're looking at a dollar, but in the budget, the new one I just gave a dollar fifty, but that's across the board. That's, nobody gets anything different than that.
This, this is not what's on your budget. That's what.
Yeah, and even, I didn't even put them in here because we hadn't decided in that way. Yeah.
This is an old sheet, but.
But, yeah, when I was just looking at, this is the budget in here, this is the period of date, so this is not twenty-four.
Then in here, doesn't separate them out.
Right.
Oh, what you can look at is that salary sheet.
This one?
Yes. That is what will tell you what she's making now, and then if at a dollar, she's gonna make.
Well, and that, this sheet had, like, um, not on this one, but on the one you were just on, it had a blank line. Okay. But like, say, Wanda and Kathy, they were, one was deputies, but then I think Wanda's was like other salary, like instead of in this top line of like.
Okay, that top line, yeah, and it used to be elected position, now it isn't, and that's why they moved it.
So that's why they looked different on that, because they were in opposite.
Let's look at homes. It's over here. Cindy, right here, okay, so this is what she makes per hour, her current salary for the year is that, for this year, twenty twenty-three. Oh, the deputy is right here, oh, yes, so that is what she's getting this year, so let's say. But here's the thing. If she gets a dollar, that's where that goes, if we go seventy-five cents, then that's how you meet them. So yeah, yeah, everybody's, absolutely. That's at last year. See, this is twenty-four. Do you want me to go get your twenty-four?
Ah, it might be in here. Yeah, would you please?
I, I think that it, I'll get all of you.
Uh, no, I got one. I got one.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, but. Yes, that's our review, yeah, that was the first time we looked at it on the twenty-fifth and went through everything, and then the new one is all, everything incorporated.
Pretty soon, we'll be down under that table. Paperwork, paper, my paper.
I had to restack, I had to re, restack, reset, restack.
So you, the additions or amendments are done through, additions or budgets are done through amendments or?
Or through a motion today if we want to add to it. And then we have to review it again for the final, after we've had a public hearing. No, we can't add, we can subtract it that way.
I just remember that, that if you, I believe, right, that when five, three eleven, the final, you can add new things in there, but you would have to make cuts.
Somewhere else.
To that somewhere else.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't exceed your total budget.
Yes.
And this transfer in from, that's the health insurance fund, but the transfer in from the interest fund, that was building off of a different, like a C D or something? Or where did this transfer in our interest fund come from?
That was that one that forty thousand on for that wage study.
Oh, okay.
And that was a C D interest fund.
It was a C D interest?
Yeah, it was interest above and beyond your taxpayers' rights.
Just, okay, I know you guys said you.
How'd you estimate the B L M monies? B L M, that, those are the royalty payments?
What did you say? Yeah.
From the N A C O, okay, that came from the N A C O.
Where do I see the total mills?
Friend of the, the total, okay, the total mills are here. Total mills and this is everything's included in that.
Carmen, the transfers for nine-one-one that are thirty thousand.
Okay, that's being transferred into the general fund to supplement nine-one at the sheriff's office.
Okay.
For the nine-one position?
Because last year it had, it was subbed in with Ian's, okay.
Yeah, because we changed how it's.
In that budget, you can look at that nine-one budget and you will see that that, yeah, transfer's coming out from the nine-one fund, and then it's going into the general fund.
I'm just looking at page five, and it's blank for the last two years, that's what I said.
Okay, there's a nine-one equipment fund?
Yeah, that's.
And then there's a nine-one, now that equipment fund was money that we put aside, and that was before we went to the state system, and I built up money in there.
Yes.
So that we could pay for equipment.
Yes.
So technically, we gotta think about that, that we don't really even need that anymore, because every month, we're paying maintenance, plus renewing that equipment, so you don't need it, but it's just.
So here's the nine-one-one.
Yeah. Okay, and that will supplement, um, the nine-one work, you know, everything into the sheriff's office, and this is, has to be kept here because these are just.
General.
No, no, this is equipment, payments to N D, this C O.
For the nine-one-one.
Exactly, specific for the nine-one that we have. That's the only money, that's the only way. And also that payment from Oliver, the thirty thousand, that also will be directly into the general fund for the sheriff's office. Yes, and then we're gonna watch it and see how much is spent, and, you know, we need to up it when we do, but, but we have those funds to use for that.
Okay, so for more clarity, right now, we had hundred and two point five eight mills. If we were to add, say, a half a million dollars to something, those, that mill would go up. But that's not where it would be set, because after we go through our budget and we would cut that half mill back out, we would be back to one oh two point five eight. In other words, at the end of the year, what the taxpayers are gonna get taxed on are the, are these mills, which will be in the final budget, not this budget.
But they're gonna get a preliminary tax statement. At the end of the month, with whatever we decide on to date.
Yeah, okay.
And that will be the starting point, um, for the final.
Yes.
Gwen, did you have a number?
I do, it's right around, about one point seven eight percent, it's right around one oh nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand, okay.
One point seven eight is twenty-nine thousand, roughly.
Roughly.
Ish, ish.
We won't hold you to it, we're just kind of.
Close enough.
Close enough.
That's. Where is the? Is that separated out by department, the person?
No.
There's like one, like one line item.
Actually, what I did here is I took, yeah, all the salaries, everything with.
Curbs what's on there, I thought, is it the N D, something?
We're looking at, okay, it's not going to be a revenue, Gwen, where, where, how do we budget that curbs, do we put it all together in one line item? Or is it in everybody's salaries?
Well, I would say a retirement line item.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that goes in with their salaries.
Above me, like the general fund, the highway department.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's in everybody's.
Each grant should have a one pair.
Okay.
Is that this, R E T?
That's.
County share, maybe?
Or that would have been.
Wait, here's a retirement here, sorry.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, that's.
County share, additional, this would have been the additional with the fifty cents. Okay, so if you up the fifty cents, then your county share is gonna go up, so then I put those numbers in there, just so that, if you want to take them out, we just pull them out.
That you're showing me here.
Yeah.
She had this line on here, when she gave us this last week, whatever day it was.
And this is the estimated match, is this the, would this be the county's portion?
Yes.
Approximately?
Yes, but that was only based off of. This, this, and this.
But it's close.
This is the additional amounts.
Okay.
And it's total, like county road, we went through the county road, so, and I have another line item there, but then you'll see, if an extra fifty cents, here's the cost.
Yep.
Pull them out easy, whatever, but at least you can see the addition.
This is yours?
Yeah.
What I was looking at is the, um, the, um, the fact of that, you know, the thirty thousand. How much is that as compared to what we already, does it one percent, ten percent, is it double?
Ten percent, we're doing four, forty-three. Seven percent.
Carmen, on page six of this. You have the.
Six point six.
Um, wage, FICA, Medicare, retention, the fifty cents.
Yes.
That's what you're talking about?
Yep, exactly, now you see the extra?
On page six, on this, on the big one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what.
I think she was just.
Yeah, these bottom three, okay, I was just making sure, because I looked over and you had the wage ones, I was just making sure you were talking on that page. So I think, Jean, your statement would have been if, if we included all of the sheriff's department, that would be another line on that page for that twenty-nine thousand.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's, that's where it would go.
That's where you'd wanna go, then you can see it.
Yeah. And just for clarification, Carmen, on. Page three. Um, the cash reserve, um, it's got the note on the bottom for not to exceed seventy-five percent, blah blah, but.
So that means, yeah.
But that, that's not my question, my question is, that nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that's not generally necessarily allocated to anything, or is it?
No, that's something that you keep in your general fund for, to have it, because you're allowed the seventy-five percent to keep in your fund, and that's to secure that you do have enough if something were to happen, just kind of a little safety net.
Right.
But then we gotta watch it and make sure it doesn't get too much, so every year, if we don't use it, you know, we can take it down, whatever, the tighter we get at this, the tighter we can be.
Right, so what I was getting at is that there is, within this budget, and on, there's a safety net, so. If we make changes in the final, we could reduce the cash reserves and still not.
Yes, you could.
Yeah.
Move our bottom line, I guess.
Correct.
It will actually, no, that would allow you, like you say, what you're thinking, yes.
We could reduce the cash reserves, in other words.
Correct.
This, the, this, the nine hundred and thirty-seven number, is that the seventy-five percent?
No, it is not.
Or we use up to seventy-five percent of that?
Yes, you are allowed to do that, yeah.
Yeah, because we've had that number higher in the past.
Yeah, I shouldn't know if that, this, we, number was put in, and it's not the total, but this will account for the seventy-five, but it sounds like it belongs to the whole.
Just depends, yeah.
Right, so last year, when we made some changes, we reduced that to stay under the mill levies, and that's how we, that's how we balanced, and that's how we reduced it, so, I guess. You, you know, Jean, I think, and Rick have made some comments about some of the additions, if we approve this now, there is that in there, not that we want to always use it. But it gives you some flexibility between now and the final, so like if we added certain things, we'd have to reduce the cash reserve in the general. Um, unless it worked under a different fund, if that fund had a cash reserve. Trying to think if there's an instance of one, but the easiest one to do is the general, because that is general, it can be used for anything. Trying to think if there's an instance of one, but the easiest one to do is the general, because that is general, it can be used for anything, so like. Page nine, the county road fund, um, it's got a twenty percent reserve, but that can only be used on roads. So like if a project comes up, or we need additional gravel, or something like that, then that gives us the flexibility within next year's budget to do certain things.
Yes, that, that, yes, I understand that one.
So Carmen, if you were to, like in the past, I was, I'm just using it for example, this cash reserve was at, this is at about, what, twelve percent or something. It's, but I mean, they said they were at fifteen, so if we raised, went to fifteen percent of that seventy eight, um, that's about one point two or.
Yeah, that's gonna shoot us up.
How, how far, that's what my question was.
This is where.
How far over would that go over then, is what I.
A lot, you only are allowed sixty, and I guarantee it's gonna shoot it up.
My question was, where, not so much of that, is where that, that target, that's the bottom line of your mill levy, and where you're at, where, when you change that, what does that affect on the other? The trickle down effect to the bottom of this thing?
The trickle down effect is gonna be, you're gonna be taxing the people more.
I know, but I, I get that part, but I just wanted, my question was, how much more, rather than, so the, um, some of the questions I had are just as like, not saying that there's a. How you wanna say it, it's more like, I'd like to have some addition things, but I don't wanna go over the top, but I, I'd like to have more, you know, when we, we can't go up, but we can go down, but I would, you know, some of these additions, I'd like to crunch out of.
Okay, here's the thing.
But those are just my, that's just my opinion, that's all.
Additions should be the needs of a county, we need to tax the people only for what we need. I confirmed that the department heads, the needs are covered, that's what your concern should be, not everything else. And if we do do anything, it should be discussed through the year and make sure, not only is it gonna be effective, but that it is needed, that is our responsibility.
I get that.
Okay, generally, what I'm saying, gonna say, Rick, is yeah, if there's a, anything in particular that the commission is looking at, we should put it in here right away. Not say, well, that was our thought.
Well, right now, these are my thoughts, but the thing is, is it's not, that is not the wishes of the commission, they're just one person here at this time.
Okay.
You went through all the budgets with these people, your department heads, and that's what we came up with. And I confirmed with it, cause my biggest thing about that meeting yesterday was to make sure every department did get what they need, cause they need to do their job. That is what the taxpayers want, and that's all they want, they don't want anything extra, but if it is something you can.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue that.
Then let's talk about it.
Whoa, let's just, okay, let's talk about it, instead of argue about it.
Not arguing, I'm just stating facts.
Here's the deal, I value our employees enough that, that I know that the, the inflation rate is outpacing what we're, we're paying already. The, the other thing is, is that these people, we can't hire anybody because we don't pay them, I get, there's a fine line, I'd like to give everybody more, but you got this, you only get.
They only want a dollar fifty.
I get that.
And that's good.
I, I know, that's.
And that's all they need, if you listen to them, they know what they need, Rick.
Well, that's. I'm, I'm just, uh.
You gotta listen.
I am listening, you're not listening.
Okay.
You're just, you're throwing at me, you're not lis, you know, you, you're not, you have to listen to, not just demand.
Yeah, we make the final decision on what.
But I'm just trying to look out that, I know there's these fine lines, I know that we can't just do whatever we wanna do and where we can go. I just think that, I'm just looking at, how can we do these things, how do we make it better? It's, we're, like you said, we're all in this together, we all need to, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to just throw away the farm, I'm just trying to say that. When you look at, when you try to hire somebody, and, and, um, they can't get anybody, and, and we, we wanna protect the revenue stream of what we're doing.
And that's why they're asking for a dollar fifty.
I understand, but I mean, it's like, I, I'm, I'm in between on that, that's all I'm saying, I'm, I just think that.
This is every department head and the county is asking for a dollar fifty.
And it's only, and it's only my opinion, please leave me, I get that part.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, we have the, we can make the final decision, we can freeze the wages, we can, we can make them two dollars smaller.
I, I understand, and I, I just, I just.
Yep.
Don, you have a question?
I was just gonna say, we were talking over earlier, every mil has worked about fifty four thousand dollars, right?
Yep.
So every fifty thousand dollars you add to the budget adds one mil.
Right.
That helps.
Yes, because I think that's what was asked.
So no, so no, like if you put in, well, like you said, if we, just, I'm gonna use my example, was one point, say, two hundred and fifty thousand is five more mil. That goes way over where we wanna be and whatever.
Well, yeah, I mean, where we got the mil sitting right now is really good, everything the taxpayers are gonna look at and say, we only have one point five mil. With the inflation rate, I feel that's pretty good, you know, you start adding extra mils, you know, people are gonna see it.
I understand all that, you know, and that, that's why there's always this balance in this fine line, that's like, that's always with government, that's just the way it is, the way it works. But I mean, it's like, I still look at the value of the people working here too, and it's like, and I wanna, you know, we need to protect them as much as we can too, to keep doing what we're doing. And I, I'm not seeing it as a bad thing for either side, I appreciate all the hard work that everybody put into this, I really do. You know, but I'm, that's why I'm just asking questions on my opinions, that's all I are.
And, and this is Rick's first budget, Sophie's got questions, I mean, that's, that's, he's trying to, we're all trying to grasp it. And I mean, you, you, you bring up a good point, what, what a mil is, and so, just, just to be on the record, estimated tax value is fifty four thousand, or fifty four million three hundred forty seven thousand seven oh four. However, then when you go to the mil, you drop off the last three zeros, that's cause mil is one thousand. So when Don mentions fifty four thousand three forty seven, the price of a mil, if you look at last year, the price of a mil was fifty two thousand seven twenty five. You might ask, what's the difference, well, when we did tax equalization, the, the value of the county went up as a whole. Um, so, I think it's very important to kinda keep the mill levies in a similar place, not to adjust them too much, but when valuation goes up. Um, that gives us a little more room for what we request for revenues and still stay in the same mill levy, so we can increase spending, but not necessarily increase the mill levy, so. What we're sitting here now, we went up a little bit on mils, but we went up considerably more, not a whole lot more, but we went more on.
We went down on valuation, when you look at, look at your page, here it is. Sorry, it is page one, when you're looking at the whole valuation, that went down from last year.
Page one?
Page one. Right past the. Okay, and the valuation is gonna tell the people what they're being taxed, so we went down. A hundred and three thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety cents, and four, a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, and thirty six cents less than twenty two. We went down four hundred and eighty one thousand, six hundred and thirty seven dollars, less than twenty two. So just so you're aware, that's what the taxpayers should be looking at, is what they're gonna be getting taxed.
And I think, I mean, you're correct on your thing, but I think that's not what, I think that was two different, two different.
Two different things.
Two different things, yeah.
Budget dollars part of the traffic, the coffee, calling, all of these.
Yeah, and.
What you're looking at is the budget dollars.
The dollar amount, and that's to me is very important.
And Carmen, you, you, you bring up a good point, but the thing to also look at, um, and, and I'm, I'm just pointing out a few things, this, this is just how I see it. When you look at page four, the revenues. Um, coal severance, coal conversion, and twenty two came in at one point, almost one point two million on both of them. I believe we budgeted like one point one on one and seven hundred and fifty thousand on the other, now, in this budget, we're budgeting one point one and one million. So that's an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's not milled, it's an increase in that outside revenue that's not a mil, so that can.
Yep. General fund.
Um, correct, but what I'm saying is that, um, even though the total value, I know, I know it's an estimate, and I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying that.
That is what that, uh, when we do that seventy five percent, that's what they cover, cause they're all estimates.
Mm-hmm, no, and I get that, and what I'm getting at is that, based on the total, you know, expenses, if outside mill levy revenues are raised. Which I totally agree with in this budget, they come in higher, that's less money that has to be taxed, because they're non taxable revenues.
Right.
So you can save on the budget, you can have higher revenues that are estimated, and then you don't have to tax as much, and so that, it's a moving target, it's all I'm getting at, it's a huge moving target.
Yes, it is.
And, and I'm, I'm fine with it.
And the object is to get, what do we actually need, and I mean, we can fine tune at that budget, that's why it has to be kept, every department has to be kept exactly, what are they spending on what? So then, together, we can really tighten her up, and we get what we need to do the job for the county, and then, and then watch it, and that's what Dawn and I are gonna watch too, is.
But when you say that, Carmen, what, what were we asking for that you don't think we?
The things that you guys were asking for came in over five hundred thousand, and at this point, everything that was asked for, and I'm not against it, we need to review it. We can't just shove something in here, and I didn't have time, this is my first budget.
And I think it's a lot of what Dawn and I. It's a lot of what Dawn and I, that's why we are trying to work this out, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, and that's what I'm telling you, I, I, no, I don't want anything more in this budget, because those things you're asking for, we need to review them and make sure that they're right. And you know what I mean, and there's, and I am not against that.
That's my understanding, like, like this whole thing, is that now's the time to put that in there, and do exactly what you're saying.
And it can be discussed a few years later, because we have deadlines.
It may not ever end up at the bottom one, but it gives us time to talk about it, okay?
Okay, here's the thing, we put a lot of time in this, and I focus on those department heads that actually do all the work in this county.
I understand that, I appreciate that.
Carmen, nobody is arguing that.
No, I'm not trying to argue with you, I just want you to understand what we did, we worked hard on here, now, I don't have time, I have a job to do, everybody in this county has a job to do. We need to be able to do our jobs, you guys know this is a balanced budget, this is common sense, there is no reason to add.
But you.
And if you wanna add something, I wanna talk about it the whole year, so I know.
Years past.
Well, I, I, I couldn't tell you when the last time it was in there, but I could see in one of these sheets that. Slapped out. See, there was something in there, whether that was, or that was, I don't know, that was a very small amount.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, it is in there from last year, or twenty twenty two.
So, just to recap, what I mentioned on the general fund, there's. There's a little over nine hundred thousand in the cash reserve, some of the commissioners requested, and what you just stated was around half, half a million, five hundred thousand. There's still opportunity to make changes in the final budget, as long as we don't exceed the total mill levy. Now, if we don't put them in the preliminary, and we wanna put them in in the final, that cash reserve is gonna go way down.
Okay, but just remember, I wanna point out, that cash reserve is for if we've over, on the revenues, that's basically what it's used for, just so you guys are aware of that.
We understand.
We know.
And I'm, I'm just trying to find a nice middle ground where we can approve the budget, and still have an understanding that if some things need to change, we can change them, however. Some things will have to be adjusted or cut, or revenue source, you know, recalculated. And, and I, I appreciate balanced budgets, um, I know the county, in some people's minds is, you know, broke, and other people's minds, it's not. I mean, we have, we have money in reserves, and there's certain expenditures that we have saved up for, like the building funds. When it's time to replace certain things, that's what they're in for, when you make those, obviously, the budget is gonna be, have more expenses than the revenues were anticipated, however. In order to pay down something that you've saved up for, it's gonna imbalance your budget at the end of the year. So, I mean, Jim has brought forth a lot of things as far as like, the cooling towers and the boilers and things like that, some of those we've done through ARPA funds, which is perfectly acceptable, I'm total in support of those. But we've, we've saved money in building funds, so if we need to fix something, that's not budgeted, we can do it.
Yes.
So.
That half a million dollars, where are you getting that number from?
That's what she said.
I know, I'm asking, Carmen, what, what number is that?
The things that we requested, or you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I, I got an email from Travis one day, and that was a half a million, and his H R on top of it, you're talking close to six hundred thousand. If you don't believe me, I got a.
No, I mean.
I was just questioning, because I didn't know where, like, I knew, I knew it was a dead number.
Yeah, that's what I, I was different.
I got my H R number, and none of them are anywhere near half of that.
And like I told Travis, that he needed to, we need to look at that this next year, I don't want surprises at the end of this last minute stuff, you know, I don't have time, it's my first budget, and. Together, we kicked it on this, and that's because every department had worked with me, the treasurer's office is amazing, both of our offices work really well together. It was really fun, it was fun to work with everybody, we got good department heads, all of them.
And I don't think any of us are questioning that, and, I mean, Jean and Rick have both stated, I'll state it too, I appreciate the work that everybody does here. And a lot of these questions are just questions, we're looking for clarification so that we understand, and, and I understand where you're coming from, Carmen, that you just want us to approve it, and. I'm okay with that.
And not just to approve it, but those things you're asking for, let's work on them next year, let's look, do we need them, how effective is it gonna be? This is taxpayer dollars, they're not just our dollars, and then if we can't, I don't have an issue, as long as you're working with me.
But some of these things we did talk about last year to discuss this year, once you got in office.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't.
I, I just read it in meetings minutes.
Four months I've been in office, that isn't enough time, when I got in office, I had to start working on this immediately. And my, my extra time on it is gonna be very limited, because I have a lot of work going on, and so does everybody else. So your requests need to be limited, and you need to respect us, because every department, that we all are busy.
And, and that's all they were, they were requests.
That's right.
And it's not, you know, we, the thing about it is, if I look at it too, Carmen, is that, as busy as you are.
No, no, everybody's busy, not just me.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about what you said, and I'm talking about how busy you are.
And that's what I said, Rick, everyone's busy, not just me.
And that's what I'm, and listen, you think, no, Carmen, I'm gonna tell you one thing, I appreciate all your work, and I appreciate how you do everything, but I don't appreciate how you do not listen. You interrupt, you will not be, let somebody finish what they say, and I get tired of it, it's like, we're adults here. Can't have a conversation.
Okay, well, I think we're starting to deteriorate here, is there a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented? If there's not a motion to approve it, is there a motion to make any changes?
I'd like to make some changes, but I really, at this point, I don't know how to do it, this is my first budget, and I don't, and I'd like, and I don't want to see, if it doesn't end at the bottom line, that's fine. But it just gives us more time to work on this and make, get to the point where we, we're comfortable, but, um, I don't know exactly how, I don't know what the dollar figure is. I mean, it, you know, obviously, we get this one day ahead of time, it's like, you know, it's not all our fault either that this didn't happen, and it's, we're all new, and I'm not saying. we get this one day ahead of time. It's like, you know, it's not all our fault either that this didn't happen, and it's, we're all new. And I'm not saying. But that's, I don't know exactly how to do it either, so I'm just gonna.
And, and I mean, I've, I've given a few scenarios on how, how we can make changes and I'm, I'm fine going that route. It, it just, it, it reduces the cash reserve on the general fund, which, you know, things come up. But I don't, I don't think we're in a bad situation.
Well, I don't like, uh, I don't like approving a budget with the mindset that we're gonna make changes on the budget that's gonna affect our cash reserve fund. If we know what we wanna, if we know what changes we wanna make, we should make them now. And even if at the final budget, we can even cut the change.
That's, that's my question.
That's only one way I can say it. As we get, I could say, I make a motion to, to, uh, make this cha-, or addition. Basically, there are additions. I don't see us making any cuts right now. But to make an addition, and even if it passes here, at the final budget, we can take it back out.
Correct.
So that's how I feel. I think, even though I, I understand that the taxpayers are gonna get a, uh, estimated tax sheet, I get that. But I think, I don't think it's, I don't think we're doing our due diligence if we say, well, let's just wait and we'll make the change down the road and we'll just take it out of our cash reserves. I understand we can. Not a problem.
But I don't like that either.
Right. If, if we have a, a thought, like Rick's got some ideas and of course, how all the conversations going here, and we're scared to make those, um, opinions, but that's what we are as a commission. We, we have the final say, no matter what.
I guess just in my interpretation of this whole thing, and what I've read and looked on this is that preliminary is what it is. And at the end of the day, that, you know, this is not where it's gonna end up anyhow. You know, it's, I don't look at us cutting anything, 'cause I thought they did a nice job. I'm good. I thought overall, everybody did a great job. I just, there's a couple things that we had talked about. I know we had talked about from day one, uh, when I got in here in January, we talked about emergency manager position. Carmen was gonna keep it until the end of the year. Where's that at? That's not here at all. We've talked about HR. Well, where's the money? I didn't see anything in there, but, but maybe I hope it is. But anyway, my conversation is, is that then that we, you know, you know, we, we all, we've talked about HR since, since I've been here. Um, whether we do that or not, I don't know. I'm not even gonna say we are gonna do that. I just know that, that I've always been told that, and this whole thing is that when it comes down to it, wait till the budget, the new budget, the new budget. So now we're at the new budget. Now we don't, don't wanna talk about it. That don't make sense to me. And I do appreciate all the efforts. You know, I have utmost respect for all the work and stuff that has been put into this. Don't get me wrong. This just didn't happen overnight, and there's a lot of, lot of stuff that went into that. I understand fully. And I appreciate that. I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of the things that we talked about for the last six months, and then they're just got, and then we're arguing about it now, rather than being adults about it. So that's where I'm at.
I've only been here four months.
Where's the emergency management one, Carmen? Is that the emergency fund?
That would be under, uh, the general bud-, uh, general fund, look under, uh, law enforcement, public safety.
Oh, okay.
Public safety. Under expenses. And that is, um, what I've always budgeted, but see, that is also what we get half of that back for. It would be page, okay, page seven, and you got county sheriff, temporary deputy. Okay, it's right under the corner. Emergency management.
I'm, I'm gonna put it like this. This will help anybody, especially Carmen. Okay, I was thinking, in my mind, and, and this is, all it is is opinion, okay? Just for conversation sake. No, that's it. I'm, in my mind, I, that's why I brought up about the two hundred and fifty thousand. It's like if we added that to this. I, it would be too much. What I'm giving, if we had compromised somewhere, if we could add about a hundred and seventy, seventy-five thousand, and then we, can we, just let me finish. Can we crunch these numbers down? I'd love to get back to where we're at, but can we crunch it down some more, so we can shrink that down to where it's manageable? That's what, what I'm looking at. Is that wrong?
You added two hundred thousand to the county road budget for some project that you, whatever. Remember that? 'Cause that's what Ken said. That is extra.
We did, we did the two hundred and fifty thousand on each side of the twenty, county road twenty.
No, it isn't anything with the road. It has something to do with the county shop.
Oh, I don't know if that ever, I don't know what if that ever went, went through.
It did, it did. And that is in here. Two hundred thousand in, in.
For the ADA compliance on that building. I didn't know what it, I was never before.
No, it was in there.
I, no, I.
You guys, whatever we said on the twenty-fifth, I made notes, and it's.
All, all I'm asking, all I'm trying to say is for conversation peace. I'm not trying to be little anybody. I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around it. Is this reasonable, or is it unreasonable? That's what I'm asking. You know, is it reasonable to put something in there?
Okay.
And, and then, and then look at it again, and let's pull that number down some more, and let's get closer to a rat.
I don't have time to be ridiculous. But I'm telling you, if it's two hundred thousand, if it's two hundred thousand, then you do have that reserve. You got nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand for a reserve. Use that.
But then say we have some catastrophic failure, and then we don't have that.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
I mean, if you desperately want to be there.
Your question is fair.
Us can go through these numbers over and over. I've spent a lot of time on these numbers. And yeah, you say it's my job. I have presented you with a good and a reasonable.
Yes, and we can change it.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I'm just, I'm just trying to be upfront of my, what I'm thinking.
But I don't like being told is that we can't change it. That's what's starting out. We can change this budget. We, and, and yes, it is your job to incorporate the changes we make.
Cause I'd like to end up, I, I like, I'm.
I presented you with a common sense.
You know, you know how you do, you push and tug.
Hold it, hold it, Rick. Hold it. You're saying that if we make changes to this budget, it is not your job to incorporate those?
I told you.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Because I told you, this preliminary budget isn't going, not one penny is gonna be added to this preliminary budget. I am the fiscal authority of this county.
You do not run the county. These five run the county. And what we tell you to do, you do.
Not one penny is spent without my authorization. I am responsible for every taxpayer's penny that we have in this county, and I will not allow you. I mean, you can change it all you want. This is the bottom line, right?
If this commission autho-, uh, tells you to, to write a check, and it's not against the state statutes, you write it.
No. It is not good, and it, and it's not authorized.
We can't cover this in this meeting, so, let's.
I don't even like this, because the, the way we're told, we can make a change to the budget, and we can make changes. And that's, that's, and then we're, then we're being threatened if we make a change, what, uh, outcome's gonna be. And I, I, I.
But if you wanna make a change, if you wanna make a change, make a motion, we'll change it. If it's not incorporated it, we'll go down that route through legal action.
There you go.
And I have no problem with that. If you guys wanna add something, tell me what you wanna add. If it doesn't get incorporated into the preliminary budget,
Go down that route.
We'll go down that route, and we'll see who wins.
This, this should like, this should not even be a thing.
It should.
It shouldn't be, really? Were you at the last meeting? Did you listen to it? I mean, really?
Under.
Listen to it?
Okay.
You don't wanna work with me, then I, I have a job to do.
Okay, stop, stop. This is going.
And I'm gonna do it with or without you. I have a responsibility to the community. I will not.
If, if you don't stop, I'm gonna ask you to leave. If you don't stop, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Travis? What are you gonna do? You guys won't listen to me? I tried to give you good information.
Listen to us.
No, they're not my boss. They're telling me, I care. Oh, no. You are not my boss. I am hired to better come.
I don't know if I'm out of order, Mr. Commissioner, but I'd like to read this.
Go ahead.
State statute one more time, if I can find it. And made a straight of decisions for the county are na-, not, not made by full-time employees of the county, but by an elected governing board of three or five commissioners. They are responsible for the county budget, county road department, social service administration, and many other county concerns. Period. Not made by full-time employees of the county. You have a problem with that? Talk to the AG. Or your elected officials. No. No, not you, the state officials. Then you need to.
The people come to me and tell me that they want you to do what you guys are doing to this county, then I'm okay. But I'm telling you, I work for the people of this county. I am accountable for every cent that is spent. You will not spend a penny unless I authorize it.
Okay, we've heard that enough. I need a motion.
Listen to it. Get it in your brain. If you guys don't wanna work with us, any of us. And it's very sad.
Can we recess for a half hour?
Yeah, we can recess.
I'd like, I'd like to ask for a recess for about a half hour.
Let's recess. Do you need a half hour, or should we recess till eleven?
Eleven might be sufficient.
Okay. We're, we're in recess. Ten forty, taking recess till eleven.
Eleven AM.